Yes. Mr. Nead?
Yes, or here, sorry, here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Hyer?
Here.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Items 3 and 9. Item 2 is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the consent agenda is approved as presented.
Second. Okay, thank you. As I indicated, I'm going to do all votes by roll call during this time period. Ms. McLean, may I have a roll, please? Roll call, please. Roll call vote, please. Words. Yeah, Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
Item 3 is citizens' request to address the board. You are given two opportunities to address the board. Under Item 3.1, you can request to address the board about any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Under Item 9, you're welcome to address the board on any topic. When asking questions or making comments, please state your name and then direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. Are there any citizens attending the meeting tonight who would wish to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda? And please realize that I have a limited view of who is attending the meeting tonight, so you'll just please need to speak up. Okay, at this time, hearing none. No one. We will move on to Item 4, Superintendent update. Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, President Horst. Update, it's been a big week in Clarkston in our transition with the COVID shutdown. Obviously, based on the governor's order last week that was going to carry us through the end of the year, we had to put into play plans that we already began making weeks ago in terms of bringing all our staff up to speed and providing an online learning platform and experience, literally preschool through 12th grade. The last two weeks, we've been offering enrichment and other opportunities to kind of engage students, more progress, learning forward in any type of succinct way. This week, based on the developments that we've had, I believe our staff is ready to go, and on this Monday, we had our kickoff. I'm getting a little reverb from somebody's speaker that's not off right now on my end, so I apologize if I'm at all lag. Anyhow, that was big news, and we're completing our first week. Obviously, tomorrow's Good Friday, the Easter weekend, so we'll be temporarily drawing to a close and starting again on Monday, and our intent is to continue to build our program forward based on student, family, and teacher feedback through the rest of the year. We've already, getting it out of the box, have learned a ton in terms of this brave new world that we've kind of taken on. Next week, by end of week, we're looking forward to surveying, a brief, quick survey to our families and our staff to get more of a formalized pulse of how this is going so far and how we can kind of continue to progress and improve. The name of the game, at least as I've been portraying it to our administrators and teachers, is very much the mindset of growth, mindset of that this is something that's going to continue to involve, and we're also taking it from the positive mindset that whatever we learn here, we'll be able to provide and push forward into some possible alternate experiences that students can get even to the ones we offer now. Along with that, we're also sensitive to right now, as anybody who's been following the news knows, that the metro Detroit area isn't a throw of being one of the hotspots across the United States, and that we're aware that not only do we have families that might be experiencing illness at home related to the virus, but very, very high number of our community members are also struggling with potential layoffs, job loss, food awareness, being able to secure supplies, and we've tried it every step of the way, the communication between our families and our teachers and our district as a whole, as we understand this is a critical and unprecedented time, and that we very much care first and foremost about your overall well-being, your mental health, and we also want to provide you with some areas to be able to engage in as it relates to school, because for those that are shut in and can't have access, this may be a place for them to see value in their days. Along that, we also recognize the struggle of our community in some ways within our school community, that is, in internet access and device access. And this week alone, we distributed a better part of 1,000 Chromebook devices out to families in need and a fair number of internet hotspots and other ways that kids could get access. Obviously, we've been planning for the last two weeks to identify those individuals who might be struggling, need those supports, and this week was a huge push, and I can't say enough about Angela Harrison and Lori Vanazak and Nancy Mahoney of the work they've done to distribute all these machines. As part of our check-ins with families that our teachers are doing, at least on a weekly basis of more, they're also identifying students that might be struggling with their technology still, or we uncover other gaps. We're also, again, checking on the overall well-being to look to make referrals for over social, emotional health of our students, and we identify that, and to the best of our ability right now to keep them on the rails and learning forward. So meanwhile, while this is going on, our food service and our district administration is still supporting, and we did through the "spring break" period, quote-unquote, "spring break," our food distribution. I was out on Friday watching this at the junior high. It's amazing the number. We're serving hundreds and hundreds of people multiple times a week for multiple meals in Clarkston right now, and we're not, we're not turning anybody away that says they're hungry, whether their kids live in Clarkston or don't. We're trying to support families at this time as best as we can. So those are, you know, some of the major things that we're working on. Later in the meeting, I have a couple of updates related to some specific items of that that we're still working on, but you should know that this isn't just a one-and-done that we've been working along with Oakland County to present a united front to solve many of the problems that all school districts face, and we've also been working with school districts across the state of Michigan, with everybody kind of lending in their expertise and their experience to help everybody get a better experience. Obviously, times like this where there's no playbook, I feel very fortunate to have the wonderful administrators, principals, teachers, and so far, I can't say enough about the Clarkston community and their engagement and support in trying to make this a go. So I think everybody is providing grace and support, and we want to continue those outreaches not only in the school district, but I'll end by saying also, we're very well and connected with Independence and Springfield Townships in our efforts to try to make sure that if we have senior citizens or anyone else out in our community that's struggling and the school can help, we're there to help and support in that way. And we've also, and to that end, done sweeps, and we're going to do an additional sweep in terms of any medical supplies or cleaning supplies or anything that might be of benefit to our local hospitals that we don't immediately need as part of our food service, food distribution, because obviously, we need some protective things for our staff that are working in those elements, but we're going to continue to look at it as not only a Clarkston challenge, but we're looking at it as an Oakland County and a Michigan and a much bigger challenge. And Clarkston schools, as I'm really proud to report to our community tonight, is doing their best they can to engage, and I think we'll always look to see where we can do more, and we're going to ride out this crisis together. Thank you for my long update, but there's a lot to share this week. President Horst?
Thank you so much, Mr. Ryan. Item 5 is presentation items. We have none tonight. Item 6 is action items. 6.1 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please, from the board?
I move to approve the personnel changes as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Mrs. McLean, have a roll call, please? Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6.2 is approval of contract renewal with FiberLink for the maintenance of the district fiber. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the conditional purchase agreement with FiberLink Inc. as presented.
Support. Any questions or discussion? For that. Okay, Mrs. McLean? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6.3 is approval of contract to Delta Networks based on E-Rate approval and funding availability. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the conditional purchase agreement with Delta Network Services LLC as presented.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. McLean? Roll call, please. Mrs. McGinnis? Mr. Hyer? Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes. The motion carries.
Item 7 is report items. There are none this evening. Item 8 is discussion items. 8.1 is grading and credit for at-home virtual learning. Mr. Ryan, let you lead that.
Thank you, President Horst. One of the elements that we're currently bringing onboard as we make these transitions has to do with how we have any opportunities to provide credit and that continuity of learning for students. And although we've been thinking and preparing a lot of the instructional capacities for Clarkston schools, we simultaneously have been looking at some of the infrastructure and how we connect the spring with next fall and look at all between the grade level experiences, how can we keep, again, that integrity of our program and that continuity of learning moving forward? Clarkston is not alone in this, and this is one of those areas that I believe probably in conversations with superintendents across Oakland County and the state, probably been engaged at least in a dozen-plus hours worth of conversations this week. Our educators from across the state are doing a lot of work trying to evaluate what would be the best to support students in a way that continues on with learning, but simultaneously does the leap to provide any type of negative impacts to their learning. Obviously, this is a setback. This is not something the system nationally or within the state was set to immediately transition to an online format, and we have to be recognized that those challenges when we talk about students and staff and our community as we move through this crisis. But we need to not make decisions in a rash way to where things that we do now could have negative consequences to students at a much later date. And a lot of things that we've been looking in terms of grading so far, our message out to our community and to our staff has been, we're working forward, albeit at a different pace and a different format, but learning is moving forward now, and we're here to give feedback. And that has been pretty much the message as well across Michigan at this point, and really by our governor, who really wants us to kind of, again, focus on learning. That being said, we've been engaged in conversations of, you know, how can we best support students, and what does that look like when it comes to grading or credit, no credit, or, you know, how are we giving this type of experience? And right now, the prevailing wisdom across Oakland County and the state is pushing more to a format overall of credit, no credit, kind of a pass/fail type thing for all students that can engage right now, while students who can engage, we look at some long-term measures to determine why they couldn't engage, if we couldn't get them to engage over the next period of months, and then find ways to kind of catch them up or to support being able to award that credit. So I believe that we're going to have an incredibly open mind in terms of trying to get students to the system. Obviously, this is not a time to be overly regimented to where we have hard and fast deadlines in terms of showing learning, but we need to have some sort of process. So right now, Oakland County this week came together with a countywide recommendation with the input of all the superintendents in Oakland County that were part of teams working towards this, and right as a whole form reflection on grading, the system recommendation is to have a universal credit or no credit move for students that can engage in it. And to some extent, I believe most school districts will participate into that, and for the most part, I'm in support of that as well. The exception, when I look at our community, our students, and I listen to families and I listen to the conversations that are going on across the state, has to do specifically with the high school, where I feel like that although credit or no credit does offer some element of fairness for students that are transitioning to this new learning format, it provides a little more flexibility in how we can monitor, I guess, you know, put value on this learning, but it also creates gaps, and those gaps related, again, where I see 9th through 12th grade, although to have a fallback or a standard form of credit or no credit based on their participation, I think that we need to do more. To that end, and I'm coming as in a conversation with our Board of Education, because again, we're in the middle of planning to make this a reality, but my recommendation is more along the lines of adding some flexibility for students at some level to be able to pick towards a credit that would also involve a grade for the families and students that could potentially be harmed by the lack of this opportunity for a grade. In my research and reflection and conversations, what I've uncovered is that you'll have some students that will fall through the cracks if we do just a credit, no credit, and there could be examples like if they were angling towards trying to secure a grade point average for a scholarship, could have been for an internship, could be for maybe a grade trend on their mid-junior year to get into the university or college that they'd like to get into. It could have been, again, scholarship opportunities or athletic invitations to be part of programs that were contingent on that. Although I believe this is extraordinary times, I would still, in my conversations with Nancy Mahoney, Assistant Superintendent, and our secondary school administrators, I believe that it is something we need to have within our system overall. Now, what that exactly looks like and how we define it over the next week or two weeks, I guess, max, is something that I feel like that I, as superintendent, am recommending that we get input, not only from our families, which have been already providing me input, but I need to hear from our practitioners at the high school and our 9th grade teachers at the junior high of how that system would look. Conversations already have involved anything from portfolios to continued grading work of the work the students are currently doing, to some sort of hybrid interim and summit of assessment, to the gamut all in between. And understanding there's no perfect system, I have asked, at least in the evaluation by our administrators and teachers for this, so far that the work they're going to do is that to the best possible, they provide some level of consistency and a system that's manageable to understand, but still provide some individuality for students to be able to show their learning in different ways. Again, we might not have an event like this for another 100 years. You know, I don't know, you know, to expect that the system's going to be perfect, I don't believe it is, and it won't be. But I do believe by having that fallback for that credit or no credit, there's a certain segment of our student population as they get their minds wrapped around this virtual home learning, plus they also get past the struggles that they might have at home. I mean, as I outlined in my opening, there's a lot of different challenges, and it would be, I think it would be bad for us to presume or to project that anything that we think would be normal challenges can apply in these circumstances. But with that said, to add that little caveat that provides a 9th through 12th grader an opportunity to try to still earn a grade in a format that's doable for the staff person or teachers that can effectively do that in some format, and for our students to have that opportunity to take the grade wherever they ended back in March and find some sort of bridge to hopefully, in my mind, improve that grade, I wouldn't see it as an opportunity to further lower or lower it in my expectations that do provide this experience to get learning, but that really we can address as many different possible concerns by our families as we can within a format like that. Obviously, at this point, the reason I'm bringing it in a public and to the school board is that I wanted you to understand, at least from the county perspective, this seems to be as late as 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock today in my conversations with colleagues, kind of the prevailing way that school districts are looking to address. Again, not everybody's doing it the same. And as far as the basic credit, no credit, the most recent survey statewide by superintendents had roughly almost 85% of school districts are moving to that format for the remainder of the year. And why is that important? Because we're also in contact with record from college admissions and others, the NCAA for athletics, I mean, all, you know, finding out where everybody's at, and the feedback we're getting right now is that they appreciate, you know, as much as there can be an overall systemized view of it statewide, but they understand themselves that because of this extraordinary time, that they're going to have to offer some flexibility in their own interpretations of what went down over this period of months between March and the end of the school year. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I wanted to put that out there as I, again, spoke with our secondary administrators, Nancy Mahoney, and I would like to have the support of our school board as I further in short time, I'm able to further vet out and provide a more, I want to call it, formative view of how this will operate. And then from there, my intent would be to make sure that our teachers and our families are well aware of what this options or what options they have, and then do our best to be as flexible as possible to get students into the best line that fits them and their needs. So I'd also like to offer Nancy Mahoney an opportunity I tried to capture as much as I could. I'm sure I probably forgot some element of it. Again, this is a new format even on the double screen right here for me at this meeting this night, so I think we're all learning and growing kind of together in this new format, and it's definitely a new world. So Nancy Mahoney, would you have anything you'd like to add on to this before we get feedback from our school board?
Yeah, I would just add that this is about the success of students in a very difficult time for families, and at no time are we going to harm our students in terms of, you know, a pass/fail or a grade. So our last day together was March 12th, and, you know, students are sitting at a grade in grades 9, 12, and so we want to communicate that at no time can that grade fall. We can turn into a pass/fail, or we can improve upon that grade based on the criteria that Sean expressed. So just really being an advocate for kids and wanting to help them move forward and looking at the best scenario that works for them.
Thank you, Nancy. So President Horst, I'd invite you and our board, if you have any specific feedback related to this or any questions that I can help provide. Again, I've been engaged probably easily in a dozen to 20 hours worth of conversations with educators across the state on this topic right now as we transition. We've, last week's big topic was connectivity and how we unroll different learning formats, so I would imagine we'll kind of continue on as we go through this process for this school year.
Sure. So I'm going to ask, I think what I said to the board earlier when I just emailed you, maybe some of the function of how we're going to try to run this in this format, is I'm just going to call on everyone and let them weigh in, at least kind of on a first round, rather than just asking people to shout out. Maybe we'll be a little orderly that way. And I'm not sure, I feel like because you and I have been involved in so many conversations, you know, over these last few weeks, I'm trying to remember, maybe, Mr. Ryan, you could tell us all before I start calling on everybody, what is it our community knows so far? What has been communicated to our parents, if anything, in terms of grades or what the expectation is? Because I feel like that's what we've said, is that students won't be harmed, but have we said anything specific? Has there been sort of a specific direction? I feel like we had kind of a plan for what we wanted to do in Clarkston, but now consortium of, you know, the county wants to sort of be on the same page, and we're now studying kind of what the state wants to do, and so can you give us maybe sort of a, what is it our community sort of believes to be true now, and are we kind of altering that thinking? And then I'll maybe ask everyone to weigh in.
Okay, excellent. President Horst, I can definitely shed some light on that. If everybody remembers back, the continuity of this experience has been in waves as well. We were just informed by the governor this past Thursday that this was going to go on for the rest of the year. So before that, we had no firm way of knowing that this was going to be any more than really a two-week shutdown, and then we were going to have a spring break. With that being said, you know, we thought, and again, we started to plan forward with the potential and the contingencies that would take us to the rest of the year, but our initial communication out to families was that we were going to provide enrichment and experiences online for kids to kind of stay engaged over those two weeks. And then, you know, we were planning, hopefully, to come back to school. Obviously, the virus and everything had different plans for Michigan and for the rest of the United States. So once we started getting the idea that we were going to have to do a longer shutdown, the plans had to change. Previously, we had focused our communication of parents that we were going to be looking at getting feedback, providing feedback from teachers to students in the format that we were going to be able to do our online experiences. Now, as we transitioned to new material and we were still thinking on a shorter-term basis, we feel like we felt as a team and as a county team, really, that we needed to reevaluate that piece where it was just going to be feedback. Obviously, a rest-of-the-year shutdown changes the game, but at every step of this, with our Clarkston team and our county team, there hasn't been the immediate rush in most cases with most school districts to immediately provide that format, that platform, that list of criteria right out of the box. It's been more of a move to try to be public and like our format right now, say, hey, we've seen a problem that needs to be addressed in terms of the continuity of experience for kids and to try to ensure as much as possible that they're engaged. Well, if that is our problem statement, and then we look at students that could be harmed by things like grade point average, then we need a better mousetrap. So I think right now, to summarize, kind of your question is, is that it went from, again, short-term to a now extended end-of-the-year closure, and that from the initial communication that went out, that we were going to provide feedback from students learning and the things they submitted to their teachers, we're now going to have to take a little longer approach to say that there's going to be the potential, again, credit, no credit, or grades for the high school students based on the current needs and necessities. So does that kind of capture? I could probably give a longer thesis, but I think everybody who's been paying attention, even today, now the governor has extended the at-home, you know, order through the end of the month. So I think we're all kind of moving in tandem as much as we can with how conditions change.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. So, board, why don't we just maybe go around the table? I see Mrs. Egan. She's one of the faces I can actually see on my right screen. So Elizabeth, Mrs. Egan, do you want to start? Maybe questions or comments or thoughts, and we'll hand off to the next.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Horst. So the first thing that comes to my mind is, in terms of the fact that the kids were out of school, we really lost two instruction weeks, then there was spring break, and now we're starting this virtual learning, will we have flexibility in terms of extending the school year beyond the original end date? So will the kids get more time? Certainly, it's this virtual learning and virtual checking in is new for probably someone like me, older than me, and the kids are more digital and much more comfortable, but still, learning digitally might be a little bit more of a challenge for them. So are we going to have flexibility on timing so that our, you know, our kids can really get the material and have that dialogue with the teachers as needed?
Excellent question, Ms. Egan, and flexibility is definitely the key piece to this new environment, and I would refer, starting looking backwards, flexibility, if a student was going to be pursuing a grade at the high school, of work that they might still needed to turn in or be able to make up as part of that would probably be my current recommendation. Again, I want to hear back from the team how that would work, but I think that would fit in the circumstances. And then by all means, in two different functions, do we have to look on flexibility at the end of the school year? One of them has to do with students that are engaging and doing everything they can potentially for that credit or to get that grade, if that's what they're pursuing, and I would envision that we would be collecting work potentially all the way up through August. And I would envision that we would be collecting work potentially all the way up through August. You know, I don't think this is a hard and fast, we're shutting down on this A, and anything else that you would like to contribute is no longer able to be part of it. On the other hand, we also are going to have students that I'm sure, for one reason or another, are not going to engage in this online learning format. And I think it's going to be for us to do our due diligence to be able to find out who these students are. Again, not in a punitive way, but I'm much more concerned about their continuity of experience as they leave third grade going into fourth grade. Is it going to involve, you know, summer support? Is it going to involve a different format for them to come back in the fall in terms of supports? I'm not sure what those could look like, but I think flexibility for both the students that are engaged in doing kind of what we want and can, assuming that that's where they are. And then also with an outreach of grace with the assumption that everybody's doing the best they can, but we still need to find out our students that are not participating in this, if there are any, and I assume there will be, how do we continue to bridge their current year with their next year? So I really see this as kind of ongoing all the way through the summer and potentially in the fall. I would not think it's out of the question that we're going to have to do some extraordinary measures in the fall to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind.
So last question I have is, do you have an approximate percentage or number of how many students we are supplying technology to? And I'm guessing those are going to be the kids that we're going to have to maybe put a little, take a little more effort with to make sure that they're comfortable with this virtual online approach to continuing their education? Because if they don't have the technology at home, they probably have maybe a little bit more of a learning curve using the devices in terms of connecting and getting information back to their teachers.
Yeah, no, I understand. But right now, and I've had Nancy Mahoney can wave because I can see her there if I'm way off base, but I think we're in the neighborhood of roughly 800 student devices that we put out, and probably in the neighborhood somewhere just under 100 hotspots and other supports that we've had to make sure that students can connect. And it might sound like, well, you just stand in line and pass them out. It was a much more Herculean effort in my observation, and one that's not done. Because I would imagine this week, we're going to uncover many students who got missed, and it might be equal to the number we already had. I'm not sure what that might look like. And then we also have to anticipate, we had a meeting today earlier, of feedback that, you know, what happens when the devices stop working, or the internet stops working, or, you know, families, because they have mom, dad, and two kids on their home network, can't quite keep up. I can't even begin to imagine or fathom how many different challenges there are going to be under this new format, but my attitude is we take it one step at a time. I've had kids contacting me through district email saying, hey, Mr. Ryan, how can you help me get, you know, this situation taken care of? And I think we're all, we try to help out wherever we can, and if everybody has that attitude, we're going to be okay.
And I think we've really sent the message that this first week has to be slow in terms of technology, and how do we even start interacting and just communicating that, you know, technology is the first piece of our learning. You're absolutely right, and how can we grow that? Because I think over time, it's going to get easier, and we can get to the nuts and bolts of the true content then.
Well, we may see education change for much further out into the future than the end of the school year, wherever that point is. So I'm glad to hear that. And I don't want to dominate all the questions, so I will defer back to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Egan. Mrs. McGinnis?
Thank you, Mrs. Horace. I do have several questions. I've been taking some notes. First off, I want to take and acknowledge that I see a lot of teachers on this call. I really appreciate them partaking in this call, and I really appreciate what I know life has been like for them. I have one in my own household. Life is not the same for teachers right now, and if it's appropriate at a later time on this call, I wouldn't mind hearing from some of their experiences at this point. But here are a few of my questions. We know that we were supposed to be implementing, as we move into next year, the new third-grade reading law. And of course, that is put off on the table right now, but my concern lies with those students who may have been sitting on the edge and how we continue to support them, aside from the fact that we have multitude of other kinds of students from every grade and every level that have support at home, don't have support at home, are self-engaged, are not self-engaged. So I'm just curious, on the level of the third-grade reading, are we making any specific attempt to get resources in the hands to those families so that we could keep those children on a progressing forward level?
Okay, I have Nancy cooperate in this answer with me, but absolutely something we've been thinking about. Nancy, if you want to direct that specific answer.
Yes, and our literacy coaches are very much involved with partnering with our teachers and targeting students who I think need added assistance. And, you know, if those families need books for those kids, if they need added support in any way, we certainly want to serve them. And I appreciate the question because, yes, they are on the minds, those kids, in terms and, you know, I even question, you know, Sean did mention what the fall looks like for instruction, and we certainly don't want to let the slide grow in terms of summer slide. I'm also partnering with Megan Brazier, our subject area coordinator for, you know, the elementary, and we're looking at Jump Start. We're still going to design a total summer learning as we look at kids, and it's a four-week program, four days a week. And so, you know, through grant funding, I think we can expand that to even offer more services for our children. In some of our buildings, we've even provided paper packets if technology isn't working and servicing our families. I know that's been pretty vibrant at North Sash, and I appreciate their efforts and what they're putting together for kids as well.
Appreciate that very much. I'm curious, it just kind of came to me as I was hearing this feedback, is that I wonder if there's any opportunity to engage our library in a bookmobile-type environment to bring out to our buildings to hand out books to? Because we don't know how long this is going to be. As you said, we thought it was going to be two weeks, and we were all going to be back. It's really hard to tell right now where we're going to be at from that. One of my other questions was, so pretty much on the same line of the third-grade reading, but more directly just at special education. So as you all know, I have a special education teacher here at home, and the issues with IEPs not showing remote work and that kind of stuff, I'm just curious, how difficult has it been for special education staff to work with the families and the students to try to keep some continuum for those students?
Okay, first, I guess, is Kathy Christopher also with us here directly? Because I would even call for her.
She was.
She is online with us?
She was. Let me look.
Yes, I do see her.
She's muted right now.
Ms. Christopher, do you mind addressing that head-on, please, if you can? If you're able to. If not, I can begin to answer with Nancy's support. Can you, is your mic muted, Ms. Christopher?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you now. Okay. Thank you. So yes, special ed teams are coming together. The last two weeks, they've worked together as teams of not only the teachers, but the support staff, including speech pads, OTs, PTs, social work, psychologists, to develop support plans supplemental to the gen ed plans for our learners that spend the majority of their day in the gen ed classes. Those are supplemental plans that incorporate the services that address their IEP goals to the best that we can at this time. Our staff are also making weekly contact with students and/or parents to ask if they have questions or to support with any of the technology or accommodations that they need in place. They also are reaching out to the gen ed teachers to make sure that the plans are coordinated. And then our students in our more supported programs, the same thing, our teams are pulling together, and they're providing the majority of the instructional plans for those students.
President Horace that finalizes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hyer?
Yes, thank you. I would just say, this is probably the most intimidating experience and thing that I have dealt with as a school board member in almost 20 years and probably collectively as an administrative team. Clearly unprecedented, some kudos all around. I think we're approaching this with the fluidity that it needs, that it has to have. It's changing every day. I can't believe how many hours all of you have put in in building what we have, and the amount of time our teachers and staff have put in. As a parent, I think it's completely intimidating to think, you know, what I have to do at home. Thankfully, my wife has been home more than I have. My professional responsibilities have gotten busier with the shutdown crazy enough, and won't go into that in this venue, but just to be able to juggle all of the things even during a shutdown, every family situation is completely unique. And I like everything that I've heard in terms of, we're going to survey, we're going to evaluate, we're going to continue to evolve, we're going to learn together. I think everything we're doing makes sense. I think we're ahead of the game of a lot of our brother and sister districts in other areas. I think that's great. I think, you know, this is, if we pretend we have all the answers, we don't. And I think we're going at this at a very individualized kind of way, and it's kids interfacing and engaging at their pace with their teachers. And, you know, we're leveraging all those things we talk about with relationships and, you know, building those with students and teachers in the classroom, like, if we didn't have those, we'd be dead in the water right now. I think that's very important. I mean, the fall is really scary to me, and I think, you know, Mr. Ryan, you mentioned in some previous communication to us, you know, about supports to the general student population in the fall. You know, obviously, the state budget is going to be different than it was a month ago. What we face in the fall is going to be a huge challenge. And I think the benefit is, all the students are going to come from the same place. The experiences they have are going to be very different, but that's not new. The supports they have are going to be very different, but that's not new either. We've all faced this challenge. We've all been disrupted collectively. And I think, you know, we're up for the challenge, but this is going to be a huge challenge. You know, I mean, we talk about social workers and literacy coaches and, you know, technology help and, you know, different components. We're going to need all of that and more. And I think, you know, our budget is probably going to be stretched at that point, and we have to be financially prudent in how we allocate resources as a board to make sure that our kids get the supports they need. Kudos to, you know, the administrative team, 100% to all the things that you've been able to tackle in such a short time. I mean, just the sharing with other districts, you know, gathering of information is helpful. You know, there's no silver bullets, there's no right answers. I like everything you said and everything I heard. This format is awful thus far. I'm all for learning and evolving, but just in terms of being able to collaborate with our colleagues and function as a team, I think we have a ways to go. In terms of like credit and grading, I don't have any concerns there. I think we're on the right path. I would empower you policy-wise, whatever we need to do to implement the flexibility that you've suggested. You know, from a legal logistical, doing the right thing standpoint, you know, let us know what we need to do. You know, I'm 100% on board with all those recommendations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hyer. Mrs. Crane?
Thank you. I don't have a lot of questions that haven't already been asked by my colleagues, more kind of statements and from my own personal experience with this. As you know, I am in a unique position. I have two children in Clarkston who are in big milestone years. One is a senior and one is a fifth grader. And so the senior one having to do with the grading and all of that, I think, I like where Mr. Ryan and the administration is going. He has been reached out to by all of his teachers. He's had the opportunity to do more work and have it, it wasn't called graded, it was reviewed, which I think he appreciated. I know I appreciated. We had a couple of virtual advising meetings with his, with Oakland University where he's going to be going, and when he told them where he was coming from, they, you could almost see them just say, oh, no, you're going to be fine. They'll send the transcript when the transcript is ready. So that was also good. And in terms of the fifth grader, I think a lot of times us as parents are projecting kind of our worries and our fears and our, oh, I'm so sad, he's going to be missing all of these milestones. And so I was trying to ask him very, you know, just without that bias, you know, how are you feeling about missing your last semester at Pine Knob? And he had zero worries. He was very much, well, every other fifth grader is going to be doing the exact same thing. They're going to be going into sixth grade without having finished fifth grade. We'll all be fine. And again, I just want to reiterate, though, that all of his teachers have been amazing. They've all reached out, they've all gone just above and beyond. So that being said, I think everybody else has asked all my questions.
Crane, Mrs. Catalina?
Just like Mrs. Crane, all of my questions have been answered. Being an educator myself in a district close by, this is actually our week for spring break, and we started virtual learning on the week of March 16th. So I've been doing this for a couple of weeks now, and I understand what our fellow educators and support staff are going to be going through in these next few months. And it is definitely a different experience. I like hearing the updates from Mr. Ryan about the credit no credit versus the pass fail. It's reassuring to know that we are going to take every student's individual needs and what, you know, they are able to do and be able to provide them with the instruction in these next few months. And then it is going to be an interesting fall come August, September, to see where everybody's at and what we're going to be doing from there to be able to, you know, start all the kids off and give them the education that they need. So I don't have any specific questions, but I'm sure as the next few weeks come on, as we move through what the Department of Ed is going to send out to us, I'm sure more questions will arise from all of us.
Great. Thank you so very much. How interesting you're far in this process.
Yeah.
I find that really fascinating.
We actually went in on March 16th into our district, and we sat down as a team, and we set up our Google classrooms and got everything rolling. So that's interesting.
Yeah, good. Thank you so much for the comments.
You're welcome.
Mr. Need?
Thank you, Mrs. Horace. First of all, before we get into the specific item, you and I have had many meetings with the administrative team over the last couple of weeks, and I have been just amazed at their effort and dedication, how hard they've worked to put this program together. I can't imagine anybody being able to do it any better. So kudos to Mr. Ryan and his entire team. On this issue, I am fully supportive of the recommendation to basically do credit no credit with the flexibility to allow grades if needed. In my situation, I'm the parent of a junior lacrosse player. He's had scholarship offers, he has other opportunities, and he would be harmed if he didn't have the opportunity to be graded this final semester. Now, senior grades are really not all that important, given the timing. I can imagine there are a lot of other junior athletes that are in the same position. So even though everybody else may be going to a pure credit no credit, I do think that on an individual basis, we ought to provide that flexibility, and I basically absolutely support Mr. Ryan's recommendation. And I have no other questions. I think those have all been well answered. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, so much, everybody. Thank you for trying to experiment with this format as well. It's very different than being in a room with everyone where we can kind of play off of each other. So the only comment I would add, and it probably doesn't surprise you, that I know we have several teachers and some parents in the meeting with us, and I already have a couple of texts. meeting with us, and I already have a couple of texts from a few of them, I think, even asking some questions about this. And so I think already they're wondering about the choice. Is this a choice? Is this, you know, will they still have the opportunity to keep the grade, to choose between credit, no credit, or improve on their grade? So I think just as this decision is made, we'll just need to be clear about how we communicate this moving forward. And I think that flexibility for those students who will need it and need to be able to make an argument for it, that exception piece that you talked about, Mr. Ryan, is what will be important and legitimate case. Otherwise, you could argue, the whole junior class might say they need an exception because they're applying to college. And so I think just knowing, as many of you have said, that the entire state, really the entire country, is in the same boat here. And clearly, our higher education institutions know it and are going to be making accommodations for it as well. And from what my experience tells me, it's going to be the competition. I would say that higher education institutions are going to have a really tough time getting kids to come to school, I think, in the fall anyway. They're going to have a lot harder time, I think, than they realize. So it's going to be an interesting cycle. But from my perspective, as long as I think there aren't a lot of outliers, that's what I worried about when we first talked about this, is are there going to be a ton of districts going off on their own and doing their own thing and saying, well, this is what's best for us? And then you don't have that sense of we're all in the same boat. And so that was what I worried about, is if everyone is kind of creating their own system, then you don't have that commonality, and you're going to have a lot of individual little issues to, you know, that won't be comparable. So, but it sounds like if you're surveying the state, 83% to 85% of the state is saying, yes, this is the way we're going to do it. And then we're able to customize it a bit to suit some of our exceptional needs. I think that is a pretty good system to have. Any follow-up questions? Mr. Ryan, have you gotten the feedback you need or board? Is there anyone who wants to raise a follow-up question or issue regarding this topic? You'll just have to speak up or wave mildly. I can only see three or four of you at the moment. Mr. Ryan, is there anything else? Mrs. Egan?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the agenda team and to the administrative team. You guys are doing a great job of keeping us informed, and I really appreciate the communications that are going out on our website through email. So unprecedented times, and just wanted to say thank you. I know it's a lot of work. So you're doing a great job.
Thanks. Flexibility. It's the new mantra. All right. Mr. Ryan, is that enough for you to move forward with?
It's perfect. I think as far as where we are, where we're going to go with it, I'm really going to lean hard, like I said, on our administrators and our teachers. I have a lot of faith in our staff, because I think at some point, I think as leaders, community people, that we have to put this in the hands of our kids and our teachers to try to make sense and make it the experience. I'm learning more and more about that of being able to reflect on the lane that we exist in as leaders. And really, we're here to support. We're here to provide opportunities. And although it's not perfect, I don't, my biggest concern still is centered around, I don't want any kids left behind. And not to use some national banner line, but I really, I worry about our kids with special needs. I worry about our kids who are struggling with things that, like I said, we can't imagine. And I just want, I want our community to think about when they levy their expectations on that, think we have, we have a responsibility to bring everybody along with us, and also to catch everybody up and push everybody down the road as we go into next year. So thank you, President. I appreciate the feedback. My next move then will be to work with Nancy Mahoney and our secondary administrators and teachers and coordinators to make the most Clarkston solid fit within these parameters. And then we'll keep providing you and the community updates on our progress. And the turnaround time will be fairly quickly. I would imagine by end of next week, we'll probably have a big chunk of this at least defined and starting to communicate it out in some fashion. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 8.2, which is the shutdown budget and staffing evaluation discussion. I'll turn it right back over to Mr. Ryan and Mr. Lucido to lead us through that.
Okay. Thank you, President Horst. On the other side of the coin, looking at the impact of continuity of our school district, I mean, from a large sense, Clarkson Schools is upwards of $90 million operation that we're still kind of continuing to push down the road. We've had different directives from our governor and clarifications from the Michigan Department of Education, and also suggestions and guidance from Oakland County on how we kind of progress down the road as far as it goes with the overall financial integrity of our school district. Obviously, we're an organization that we focus on people. There's an incredible culture here in Clarkson. That's why the whole last conversation, I don't think is going to, is not my concern, because I know we're going to do a great job, write down every last teacher and educational support person that we have engaged on this. On the other half of it, we do have to, as an administration and a board, have that tough family conversation, though. I always liked, you know, taking things that are really complicated and sometimes making them a lot simpler. I mean, the reality of our situation is, we've been given some assurances by Governor Whitmer that we were going to continue on with our funding for the remainder of the year as we continue to offer our programming out to the community. But it should be known that there's a fair amount of our programming in Clarkson that's not funded by the state. We've kind of always prided ourselves in our own industry ingenuity when it comes to programming that generates its own revenue as part of the organization and kind of looking at the big picture of what that translates to and some decisions we have to make going down the road. To kind of help articulate that, as we've been all focusing on different elements of the problem as a great team, Mr. Lucido has been working with Ms. Rogers, our business director, to really kind of look at the short term and start to wrap our minds around the long-term impact that this shutdown statewide is going to have on Clarkston. Obviously, looking into next year, for those of you who might not know it, the State of Michigan's budget runs from October to October the next year, and school budgets run from July to July. So at some period between now and July, we're going to be given a budget for next year from the State of Michigan. And thinking that, yes, we're only in April, but knowing that the State of Michigan, for all intents and purposes, is shut down right now, that means that, you know, the normal flow and confluence of tax base and everything else that funds public schools is also going to be under incredible strain. This all in a time, as we outlined in our last part of presentation, that I think more than ever, as Mr. Hayer outlined, we need full resources of the Clarkson School District to be able to support that learning moving forward. It's going to be a critical time as we transition students. And, you know, so looking at the long term, we need to continue, as I'm working with our legislators right now, to make sure that our voice is heard, that, you know, we're going to have a lot of work to do come this fall, and we're going to need everybody we can to be able to support that work. So that's kind of the long term. But we also have short-term concerns also to talk about as a board this evening. And I'd like to turn to Mr. Lucido right now to kind of walk us through step by step on what that process will be.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Before I get deep into the budget, I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit. As Mr. Ryan said, we do have a $90 million budget, and our teaching staff and our food service staff have been doing a phenomenal job feeding our community and getting the virtual program up and running. But there's been a great deal of work that's gone on behind the scenes to make sure the payroll has been run. Our accounts payable has still continued. So I wanted to commend our business office and everyone over at our central office staff who's been supporting this with all the different contractors, so we have to make sure everything is running. And I wanted to just kind of talk about some big district operations and what that's going to look like for the rest of the year, at least what our planning is now with the information that we have. Our pupil accounting department, we can't enroll students right now, obviously, because they're not allowed in the building. We are currently working on an online enrollment system that we hope to have up in early May. When we get a little closer, we'll be doing some community communication with that. But we're going to be moving to being able to do our enrollments online. We're currently trying to move forward with our benefit open enrollment for all of our employees in the first two weeks in May. Again, we're going to be doing that either online, or we're going to be doing a call center for that. Our staffing and hiring process, all the job fairs in the State of Michigan have been canceled for this month. So we are going to move forward with our staffing process and start posting for our positions. So we're still in a good spot to get the best talent into Clarkston weekend for this school year. The MDE has been very supportive with what the information that they've shared and the decisions that they've made. Today, they released two memos. One is relaxing the teacher certification renewal requirements, which will, this time where teachers aren't allowed to be able to get professional development, will not count against them to renew their certificate. They've also lifted the requirement for evaluations. And we're looking for some more information out there for them to come to be able to renew teacher permits that we've had teachers working on this year in subposition. So all and everything is, everyone has been very supportive, and we're just trying to move all of these behind-the-scenes district operations virtual. So again, I just want to commend all the people who've been doing that, because our payroll and all this was a great deal of work from even all of our support departments. So as, you know, as we've moved these things forward and started to evaluating our budget and the impacts of this, this is having a negative impact on Clarkston Community Schools' budget this year. We're still tallying things up and doing forecasting and really evaluating our staffing, but we're looking at this being a cost going into next school year of upwards of three quarters of $1 million due to the shutdown. So what we've been evaluating and going through this is different areas that we can reduce costs, obviously, to go into next year where we don't have this big of a reduction to do. And one of those areas is, Sean mentioned, the governor's executive order stated that employees that are paid directly through state funds, the school districts are required to pay. And we've been evaluating that, because my studying of this recent changes to unemployment in Michigan and the federal stimulus package that's been put out is that unemployed workers in Michigan will get an additional $600 per week on top of whatever the state requirement, whatever their state earnings would be. So for instance, if there was an individual who was earning $350 a week, my math comes out to be, if they were on unemployment, they would be earning $786 a week versus $350. So this doesn't apply, this opportunity doesn't really apply to all of our staff, but there is, there is some, there is a few position classifications that this would apply to. And one of the things that we want to discuss with the Board of Education is we would like to have some dialogue with these employees and potentially, potentially offer this opportunity to them. From one, it would help the district out because we're in a financial situation and that we need to improve upon. And number two, I think it would be an increase in revenue to some of these staff members. So, you know, every employee who works for Clarkston Community Schools, whether they're contracted or a direct employee, is very important to our operation. And, you know, Clarkston Community Schools is one big family. So we want to be very careful not to be disrespectful, but I also don't want to deny an employee this opportunity that would help them and also help the school district. And that's what we would like to get some feedback from the Board of Education on this evening.
All right. Mrs. Horst, could I ask a question?
Yes, I was going to say, please, go ahead. Mrs. Egan?
Yeah. So, yes, I think this is short-term. This obviously makes sense. We don't know long-term, though, how long these people will get those additional payments from the federal government as well as state unemployment. So my question is, do we anticipate bringing some of those positions back should we get some relief in our funding for the next school year?
Oh, I'm, let me, that's a great question. Let me clarify. We need all of these positions back in August. This would be for the time period now.
Right.
And my understanding is the government's, the extra $600 that's provided from the federal government will go through July 31st.
So we're looking at what you, I would call a short-term layoff?
Yes. In fact, the government specifies exactly how these letters have to go to these employees if you're going to take advantage of this. It would just be temporary due to the coronavirus shutdown.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
Which employees are we specifically talking about?
Um, I, right now, our current thinking is the employees who would be able to take advantage of this if they chose would be our ECC staff and also our building and instructional aides, because they're paid through edgy staff. Those are the employment groups that we would like to offer this to. And actually, there is an FAQ coming out from the governor, and they are going to be specifying this a little bit cleaner than they did in the first executive order. But that's our interpretation right now.
Madam President, I have a question. So it's my understanding, because I've been following a lot of this with my work at OU and small business loans and stuff like that with cranes, is that employers, school districts, will not be penalized for the people who go on unemployment due to COVID-19. So I would have no problem for select groups. I would prefer it to be an all or nothing when it comes to the group. I would hate to see John doing it for four, five, six, 10, 12, and not the whole group, and trying to keep track of who is or isn't within the group on unemployment or furlough, however you might want to call it. So as long as we're not penalized, and my understanding is that we wouldn't be, I would be in favor of offering them the opportunity. I will say that I haven't been laid off since 1979, and it's not a really great feeling. So it is, it is an emotional hit, even if it's, in our case, a planned situation to provide some benefit to the employee. It is something that can be emotional to the person. So I recognize that. And my biggest concern is, with all our administration has going on, I would not want to see John, you being taxed to not being able to roll this out to all the peoples within those groups. And I would not want to see it be a pick and choose kind of thing.
What kind of dollars are we talking about here, John?
Well, the deficit we're looking at going into next year is, like I said, it's around $750,000. I mean, if every employee took it in these two groups, it would be like $560,000 savings between now and the end of the school year.
Mr. Lucido, when you, when you use that language and you say, if every employee took it, though, I'm just thinking about what Mrs. McGinnis just said about wanting it to be all or nothing. I mean, are those at odds?
Um, I, I would, it would be, it will be a massive labor undertaking to administer this for different percentages and trying to keep track of who wants a letter and who says, no, I'd rather stay on Clarkston payroll. But I just, we've had a lot of dialogue internally as administrative team. If we are going to offer this to employees, I am willing to take that on and manage it. I just, I think it, as Mrs. McGinnis was saying, it is very emotional. And I don't want anyone to have a negative experience or that this to come across as a negative to them. So I would like to keep it voluntary and take on the work that it would be to manage that. I know there is some, there's also some mortgage relief out there that I'm not really well educated on, that if you're unemployed, you can get, but if you're still getting income, you couldn't. So I'd like to, I'd like to keep it where it is still voluntary, if the board's supportive of me offering this to these groups.
So are we using the services of some of these folks right now?
Not at the moment. Maybe a few of them are doing some nice things like volunteering with food. But right now, I really don't have work for them.
So what, why would somebody say, I'd rather not be on Clarkson Schools payroll?
Because they can turn, my understanding is that they would make a significant amount more money. If you look at the example I gave, we're talking about $300 a week, $1,200 a month over a three-month period. It's a significant earning differential.
John, it just crossed my mind, too, that those people from edgy staff or their employer, so their unemployment is under edgy staff. So-
Exactly.
So they're not technically speaking a Clarkson employee to begin with. I know that that might not be how they see it. In the unemployment world, we are not their employer. So I'm curious if you're the person who actually is the one who's handing out the letter. I think it's EDU staff.
Yeah, EDU staff would be for those employment groups. And I worked that out. I would, I would work out a process with them that I'd communicate to um to those groups if they wanted to do it.
I would.
Just to step in on there, I'm sorry, just to clarify that, too. We considered, I know our board is supportive of that, these are Clarkston people all the way through and through. Uh, it's just on, I I know that Miss McGinnis is referring to that specific sliver of how um things are communicated out based on their pay structure and who manages that part, uh, but they, we we hold them pretty close.
Right, and I only say that that is IRS rules, so.
Right, no, I just wanted to clarify that, not to escape, because I know exactly, uh, Miss McGinnis, what you meant by that. But I just wanted publicly to make sure that was clear that you, I know, because I know your feeling for those people.
Absolutely recognize them as our employees. I truly do. I don't want anybody to think that's not the case. I just happen to know employment rules, having dealt with employment for eight, for 22 years. So I, you know, that's all I'd say that. And while I appreciate that John's willing to go that extra mile and and again, I know what it's like to have been unemployed as only probably a few of us ever have in our lifetime. It is an emotional hit, but I do think if we can provide them that level of assurance, again, being a member of that Clarkston family that we know that they are, um, we might be able to, in that relationship, help many of those people get over that stigma of what that really means, especially because as as um as Stephanie said a little bit ago, you know, all fifth graders didn't get to finish the school year. So this is not something that's individually to this person or to that person. It is, all of us are in this kind of same boat. So um John might be able to um find some way to help those people realize that this isn't something that they should look at themselves and say, well, how, what did I do to deserve this because they did nothing?
Great point, thank you.
Uh, can I just, speaking to the emotional hit part of it, do you have something in plan, Mr. Lucido, as to how you're going to talk to the people and offer them the choice? I mean, I assume it's not just going to be, here's the letter.
No, of course, of course not. No, I would, I would do a WebEx call. I mean, that's really my own, that's the best option I have right now would.
Okay.
Before we're on right now and just, you know, it's not a, you know, our our intent or, you know, with board approval is it's not a pressure thing, it's more of an education and, you know, I'm going to go over the benefits that I that I see with this. They've also lifted the earning requirement because, you know, some of our staff won't qualify for unemployment before. But Governor Whitmer has has lifted that um very recently. So everyone should be eligible for this.
Okay, all right, well, thank you in advance. That's an incredible amount of work.
So there's another element to do is that um EDU staff is eligible for small business loans if they um do not release their employees. So um hopefully EDU staff is aware of those parts of the CARE Relief Act and um decide how it best in impacts them. Because if they let go of their employees, then they lose the leverage of being able to get a small business loan. So I don't know uh if they've if they thoroughly know all that information. If they don't, they should look to be, to get some resources for it.
So I I know as a board, we've we've directed Sean and John and the whole team to, you know, tr- treat our employees the right way and make sure we're doing, you know, we're doing the right thing here. And and I think that that directive holds. And this is a little, a little more strange in that there might be several right things here. And and it is a moving target. I I I don't, I don't love sending somebody somewhere else to to uh get some benefits that we don't control, that may or may not be there, that may be, you know, different. I mean, it it I would liken it to, you know, early on in the uh ACA days of sending somebody the exchange when there were all those, you know, technical and enrollment challenges. You know, I I I think a lot of that is happening with um uh the unemployment system as well. I I I guess I I'm I'm open to the recommendation. I want to do the right thing. I also, like, I feel like I'm making this decision a little bit in a vacuum. And I know it's just a discussion at this point. But but I I as a board, I mean, we need to, we need to safeguard and care for the resources as a whole. And and while, you know, Mr. Lucido, you you provided a couple of specific data points. You know, I I'd like to understand for sure more of the the entirety of the budget and what this means. You know, if there are dollars that that we have to save because we have to safeguard these dollars, you know, let's understand what the magnitude of that is and and make the decision, you know, and and, you know, weigh all the options and make that decision together as a team. If if, you know, there's uh, if it's not a very big swing one way or another, we just want to do the right thing, that's different. But there's a lot of moving parts to the budget, right? If state aid continues to come in, that's the majority of our funding. You know, obviously, we're not getting any food service revenue. We're not running buses either. We don't have sub costs. You know, there's no gate receipts, you know, I mean, it's uh, you know, in terms of fee for program and and some of the other things we have going on, it's it's um a lot of moving parts. So I guess I I would think as a board, we'd want to understand a little more about what the budget implications are, not knowing what we're going to have in the fall, you know, fully understanding what what things look like before we make any, I'll say, big personnel or staffing decision. And I understand this is somewhat time sensitive in that, you know, we're uh, if we don't do something sooner rather than later, it's it's sort of irrelevant at that point.
We haven't heard from Mr. Need or Ms. Catalina. Are there additional thoughts, comments? Questions?
Mrs. Horst?
Oh, Mrs. Egan, hello.
Yes, I'm sorry, uh, just um tagging on to Mr. Hayer's comments. Do we have a date on when the board will have to approve the next budget amendment? Because we will see then certainly what the impact of the last couple of weeks have been, right?
Yeah, I mean, amendment.
Aren't we going over budget in some categories now? If I'm hearing Mr. Lucido's comments that we think we're going to overspend three quarters of a million dollar.
Well, I mean, that's probably for lack of revenue, but I think we we need to understand what those projections look like outside the sort of regular amendment process as well.
Right.
Right.
But I'm asking the question about just the timing on the next budget amendment. I mean, there will be one.
Right, but it's not going to be in the next couple of weeks. I mean, it wouldn't even, I don't think it'd be closer, certainly not until May or June. So I mean, I think it'd be something we'd have to bring back sooner than that. But I think Mr. Hayer's point is well taken. I mean, there are so many moving pieces here.
And there's still, this is Sean, this, there's still variables out there, too, in terms of state funding for food services and things that we may still be eligible from the federal government and from the state. It it that picture is not completely clear in my mind. And just to piggyback on Mrs. Egan's point there, you know, we, the cost, any cost overruns that we have will be attributed to either one of two things. One is revenue that was cut off in terms of programs we weren't allowed to have. So like, you know, your early childhood, community ed, those type of things. Or services that we weren't planning to provide in terms of food service and things reaching out to families that need it right now. So really, there's not anything that's outside the scope of anything else. Everything else was completely within the budget or under um going into this crisis. But thank you.
All right, let me try that one more time. Ms. Catalina, Mr. Need?
Sure, uh, Mrs. Horst, I guess my view is we have two categories of employees or ECC staff in our instructional age for which we don't have any work. As I understand that the decision before us is whether we should agree with Mr. Lucido's request and allow him to offer those individuals the opportunity to go on to these other benefits and potentially make more money. And he is willing to do that not as an all or nothing, but to spend the time to allow people to make that decision on their own. Um, and I'm supportive of that. The alternative is to not, is to lay them off entirely, which I don't think is a good idea with our culture. I think this is an opportunity for us to minimize the financial hit to the district. Um, and given the fact that he's willing to take the extra time, and I agree with Mrs. McGinnis's comments, it is going to be a bunch of extra time for him to work, but he's willing to do that. Uh, I think we should allow him to offer that option. And I know he will do it in, you know, the best way possible in terms of communicating that with our employees.
Um, all right, this is Ms. Catalina here. Um, I agree with Mr. Need um in that I believe that Mr. Lucido will, um, you know, if he wants to put in the time and the effort to go ahead and do this and um, you know, give what our EDU staff employees, you know, would be more beneficial to them. I am concerned with um, you know, with the fear of, you know, laying off a um any staff member, even in this very temporary situation. Um, would they, you know, have this insurance and security to be able to know that they're going to be coming back in September? And, you know, have a job when this COVID-19 pandemic is over. So that's just one fear as an employee that I think getting laid off in this very weird time, how can we, you know, make sure that our Clarkston family comes back in the fall?
Ms. Ms. Catalina, I would document that. And if if someone moved forward with this, I would, I would make that clear in my documentation that they would be able to come back at that time.
All right, thank you, everybody, for weighing in. I do appreciate everybody's willingness to work with this format again and and take turns um kind of in a round table and and weigh in. And um I have to say that uh I think we have put uh an extraordinary high value on creating a culture here that values our people. And certainly, that's a big concern when you start talking about people's lives and their livelihoods. How do we do that and uh and and maintain the culture that we've had here? And I feel like the conversation we, um, that it sounds like to me, everyone is supportive since Mr. Lucido has said he's willing to put in the work. It is the best compromise there possible in a way that values the culture, that respects uh our people and does it in in the most delicate and respectful way possible, uh, in a way that says we value your contribution and and appreciate anyone who's willing to, um, you know, to help help see us all through this, through this time and that we uh intend and and fully want you to come back in the fall. I I think like all of us, we see the news and we see uh what's happening with the unemployment system. That concerns me for these people because of this time sensitivity. This is a short time. We're asking them to take this, you know, to take this chance, and I would hate for them to to do that. And then because of what's happening um with the unemployment system for them not to be able to take advantage of it. I don't think that's that's nothing we can control, however. So um I know Mr. Lucido uh will handle this in the absolute most professional and, um, you know, most compassionate way possible. So uh that's what I'm hearing from everybody is that I that we're supportive of him moving forward with that since he's willing to do it in that way. Uh, I think there were some other issues here that I've documented in terms of trying to see the bigger picture of the budget. You know, understanding where where all of that fits, making sure that um our employees know how valued they are and that um we fully intend that they'll be back as part of our Clarkston family in the fall. Is that the consensus of the board? How about if it's not, speak up? How's, I don't know how to ask for an easy consensus in this format. If that's not, if I've misrepresented it, then you can speak up. How's that?
Well, I just have in my notes that there was 750,000 of additional cost. And maybe I didn't hear that with um all the changes in activities. So we do not have an additional 750,000 dollars of additional cost?
I I think Mr. Hayer said it while early, it's a loss of revenue. So like our early childhood is almost half a million dollars alone, reimbursing the parents for the tuition. There's a food service costs in there. There's a, there's no rentals coming in. There's no athletic gate receipts. Those are, those are really what the, those are the big things that are making up that loss of revenue.
So it's loss of revenue, not additional cost?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, I think you have your uh feedback and your um consensus from the board to move forward.
I appreciate that. President Horst, it was very informing and uh I like the idea and continue of that uh view in Clarkston that we bring everything out publicly. We have a straight out, very direct dialogues with uh yourself and the Board of Education. And I feel very uh focused on uh steps that my team and I need to take moving forward. And we'll keep our day to day uh communication going moving forward. So more to come because I I don't think this is the last changes or uh, I think if you have a static mindset right now, you're in trouble. So I think ours is very flexible and we're going to continue to move forward on all these items. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mrs. Horst, I would just add, as we wrap up here, that, you know, I really appreciate the the um board leadership team meeting with the administration and keeping us on track. And and the administration's focus of really 100% focusing on students and learning is absolutely where it should be, where it should have been, where it will be. I think as we go forward in the last couple months of this this school year, in the last um three months of our fiscal year, I mean, as a as a nuts and bolts of the board running the show, we do need to get back to some semblance of normalcy relative to finance reports and, you know, some of the the operational data that, you know, it's just, it's been a little bit of a vacuum just because of what's been going on. And that's totally appropriate, and I don't have any issues with that. But just, I would, I would ask the administrative team with the agenda planning team to figure out the best way. And I don't necessarily need to discuss any everything. And and I don't know that, you know, I don't want to circumvent any virtual public opportunity or anything like that. But I mean, getting the administrat, getting the information out to us, um, and giving us the chance to ask questions. And and I would imagine we're going to have less board meetings just because of the format and the the oddities of this. You know, I mean, we can certainly bring up those items as needed. But, you know, the logistical pieces that I know administration has covered, I think as a board, we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence on behalf of the community as well.
Yes, agreed. I think uh I I think now that we see that we're in this for a little more long haul, we'll be able to do a little more of that regular planning. I think those first few weeks, it was like strip it bare. Let's, let's do what we need to do to keep everything running. And now that we realize this may be around for a little longer, we're going to build some of that uh, some of that normalcy back in, if you will. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. Number nine, citizens are welcome to address the board on any topic at this point on the agenda. I know we have a lot of citizens in attendance tonight. If there's anyone who would like to address the board at this time, uh, please speak up and we'll do this in an orderly fashion. There's also the chat box there, right up here. I don't know if anyone can see this, but there's a chat box here if you want to just skew up. Really? All right. No one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to information items. Number 10, uh, right now, our next Board of Education meeting is to be determined. This took the place of our meeting, which was scheduled for Monday, the 13th. We needed the timeliness of it um for the discussion on grading. And board, uh, will be in touch after our next agenda planning meeting. Uh, item 11 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All right, Mrs. McLean? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Hayer?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
And Mrs. Horst?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.